All right, you got it.
For making the stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pause this evening with meaning to order. And just so we know, we're all working off of an amended agenda, which you have a copy of on your desk. Just adding an introduction and then some of the added the ordinance numbers. For a couple of items in the new business. So first, we have the introduction.
Yes, so. Um, I'm pleased to announce that this is our last hire for the year. For sure. Paul Garrison, Williams State of. Um, comes from us from Parker. So he's starting his career in law enforcement where his first agency will be going to the academy in October. Um. And attending the academy over the holiday season, so he won't be done until next year. Academy and then he gets to be, he's already started his FTO phase. Um, but then once he gets back from the academy, he'll probably have another eight weeks to finish up, so. We're very pleased that we got fully, very pleased, we're fully staffed for the year. Um, it's been a long road. Excited.
Welcome.
Welcome, Paul.
How many are, is full staff?
So sixteen, that includes myself.
Okay.
Um, and we have one part timer. Who handles our court security stuff, but yeah, sixteen, seventeen with the partner.
Very good. Well done. No, it's been a really long process, ten minutes. All right, next the consent agenda. Anybody have a question on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and authorize a mayor to sign.
I second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
Motion passed. All right, next we have comments from the public. Is there anyone here with comments? On anything other than the agenda items? Number three, the public hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So if I get a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing regarding the revenue neutral rate.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, motion passed.
Okay, so uh, the city of Paola received the R and R of forty point six two one mils. Uh, from the county clerk staff to compare budget according to the anticipated revenues and expenditures. And determined the needed mill levy of forty two point two four two, which will exceed the revenue neutral rate. Um, on July eighth, the council set the revenue neutral public hearing and budget public hearing for September ninth. And approved a notification to the county clerk to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The county uh, was notified prior to the July twentieth deadline. And the hearing notice was published in the Miami County Republic newspaper on August twentieth and on the Paola website, um, obviously. Uh, we will have the revenue neutral public hearing separate from the budget public hearing. You'll need to consider a rather uh, resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate during the public hearings. And then close that, and then you would be able to open the budget public hearing.
All right. Are you here to speak on the revenue neutral or the budget?
Me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just kind of wanted to see what was going on.
If you, if you want to speak, you can. Or if you want to just sit there and observe, that's okay too.
Well, I'm just observing, because you know, this probably is all clear to you, but it's. Very murky, yeah.
Okay.
So I have this stuff, so.
Okay, thank you, yes, you're welcome. All right, anybody have any comments on the um, resolution exceeding revenue neutral rate? Questions on it? We've talked about this extensively. Over multiple work sessions, so. All right. Um. So you said we need to close?
Resolution first, then close.
Yes, okay. All right, so we'll do the motion to approve resolution. Twenty twenty four dash zero one seven.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero one seven to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate for the city of Paola.
I second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right. Now we can do the motion to close the public hearing regarding the revenue neutral rate. Is there a motion to close the revenue neutral hearing?
I move to pause the public hearing regarding the R and R.
I second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. Public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty six Paola city budget.
Uh, so after lots of discussion, um, we, it proposed expenditures for the twenty twenty six budget, it's seventeen million, six hundred ninety two thousand, six hundred thirty five dollars. With a mill levy of forty two point two four two. The mill will bring in the um, three million, seven ninety five, seven fifty. So the rest of the budget is other um, money from various revenue sources. Uh, we do budget for a five percent bill latency rate, but the um, anticipated solenicity rate is seven point nine, so we have. Been able to manage with five percent. Um. Anybody have questions on any?
This is just slightly below last year's mill.
Yes, so this year's mill, that we processed, sure. Yes, right, it was forty two, three, five, three, and then both this year's forty two, forty four.
In the, in the meeting that I wasn't here, the, the dollar amount that that was mentioned, it was a hundred and forty five thousand, seven hundred. Is that right?
Uh, yes, plus that is what we are exceeding over the revenue neutral rate.
So yeah, as far as. To turn in the mill into a, an amount.
Yes, so the one point six two one mils is the hundred. That, the hundred thousand.
Yeah, I just need to turn it to an amount and make sure I did that, because I. I think when I first was uh. Thinking about the. I get a lot of feedback concerns from citizens about. Property taxes and whatnot, and. Uh. Think it was first to important, important to understand the scale, so I did some math, which. Might be a little dangerous. But uh, I think if I did it right, that it comes out to uh. Fifty eight dollars per year per household. And five dollars per month. Per household. So. Uh. You know, while I would never take lightly the idea of increasing uh, string on, I know everybody's budgets are tight and. Uh. All that, but considering that the cost of everything's going up in all the departments and what they're facing, uh, it just makes sense that it's, it's. A pretty modest increase, and it allows everybody to. Keep operating efficiently, then. It makes a lot of sense.
I think it's also important to note that most of the time, it, a large part of our budget is for staff. And making sure we keep quality staff, so I think that's important. Because if you don't invest in your staff. You may end up paying in the long run anyhow. People not, they put to their jobs or whatever. I think it's always good to. Be able to give people um, the raises that they deserve every year, and I know for a while when I came in, we were on a freeze still. From two thousand eight, so. It's nice to not be in that position right now.
Um, housekeeping, Robert, did we open the public hearing?
No.
Are we just?
Yeah.
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 Oh.
Well, I thought we were supposed to, and then.
I just.
We were started, and that's like. Okay, so, motion open public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty six budget.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon. Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
All right. Anything?
Okay.
Guess we'll close. That would be right now.
Did you?
Yep, you're welcome.
I move to close the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty six budget.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right. Right, okay, so back to the budget, which I should have said something, but I was just gonna try.
We're good, it's fine, we got it.
Yep. Consider not perfect, and that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so back to the budget. We're back on investing in staff, not being salary free, that type of thing, so. I think that's good.
Hmm, to me. I mean, we have a fully manned police department too.
Yes.
That, that's a pretty good step in the right direction.
Yes.
Yeah.
Staffing and manning.
And training.
A fair majority of it.
Mm-hmm, continual training.
Well, I'll probably expound a little bit on uh. Councilman Brown's uh, comments is. That. I, I correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Ms. Marler, but I think about twenty eight percent of our budget is. Property tax related. And that's just a guess, don't, don't, don't quote me on it. And the other ones that we have, uh, use the word in, in their enterprise funds at that. I've been keeping my uh, revenue neutral uh, sheets, and so unlike uh. Councilman Brown went and did some uh, addition, subtraction, stuff like that, and. And I can see why people get a little confused over this when it's all said and done, uh, I've been doing this for forty years, and. If I get confused on it and I understand how the system works, been in the system. It's difficult for somebody to kind of take to, to take a look at it, but just, just to run some numbers. And, and after running my numbers, I, I, I could really sense frustration uh, from the residents. Uh. That uh, since twenty twenty three. And I'm not uh. I, I am not saying anything about the county of, of appraisal department, so don't, don't anybody interfere, this is it, because. I truly believe that my house is, is at market value. Uh, in fact, it might be a little below, you know, it's, it's, it's at market value. Uh, sort of twenty six percent. In the last, since twenty twenty three, does, does it represent the market? Yes, yes, it does. Uh, I know before they, they would always keep the mill levy, and that was kind of the, the mill levy that, that was coming in. And uh, but uh, taking a look at it when it's all said and done, one of my neighbors' taxes actually went down this year. But his house stayed the same, so. Me, by, and again, by trying to put it all together, but since my house went up. Evaluation, my slice of that pie just gets a little bit bigger. Uh, in relation to his, his stayed the same, but if mine got bigger, it, it, it kind of shrunk it, uh. Uh, so I, 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 I do understand that part of it, one thing that I did look at, going back over to the years here. That uh. We've been averaging about four point five percent on the increases. That the last two years, and, and the city business. It uh, it does make a difference that we're able to keep, keep that, that numbers down, so. Uh, in order to keep help. And in order to go ahead and uh, try to run the city the best that we can. Also embedded into this uh, budget, and I know this nice lady here said, and what you want to understand. Uh, we put an extra seventy five thousand dollars in the budget this year, because they want to do some more stuff downtown. And we want to, and, and, and that's kind of what we're looking at, uh, and then there's other things is. Do I think we'll get hit revenue neutral sometime in the future? Probably, at, 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 at some point we could. But this is explained about as well as it can, but by the time that you got this moving part over here, what your house is worth. You got this part over here. Uh, on uh, what the city's going to do, and what the county's going to do, and what the schools are going to do, it gets a little bit confusing. And if everybody, and if anybody wants to hear a detailed uh, uh. Uh. Talk about how we got into property taxes in state of Kansas, I, Rick Randy had to hear me the other day. In which I told the Hill history of it and how we got there today. I was talking to Senator Tyson the other day, and I chatted to her with just a little bit about it. Uh, but regardless of where we're at, we are here to today, and uh. The numbers look pretty good to me, I'm like Commissioner Brown, I, I will take a, 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 a look at it. And it comes out to like five, mine's a little bit more, because my house went up. But uh. I, 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 I do understand the frustration, I really do, because. I'm sitting over there and I'm running my social security numbers, and I'm going, am I going to get a two point five increase, or I'm going to get a two point seven five increase, you know? And you really start watching those numbers. And it boils down to a ten dollars, it boils down to a fifteen dollars. And then I noticed my Part B went from one hundred eighty five to two oh six fifteen. So it, 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 it gets to be difficult, and, and I understand that, but ultimately. When uh. You call and you want the fire department to show up, they, they have to show up. When you want the chief of police to show up, you want them to show up. When you want uh. The uh. The public worst to show up, they show up. And uh, I'm going to read a little bit, a little about of the letter, it's going to tell you kind of some stuff that we do, some frustrations that we appear as, as a council lead. But like I said, if anybody wants a detailed history of the property tax. In state of Kansas, come talk to me, and I can kind of tell you how we got here today, when it's all said and done, with that, I'm going to. Be quiet.
I think all the departments did a good job. Once again. And city staff did a good job telling the departments what will and won't work. Like, thank you, but no thank you, all right, yeah, so we do say no on some things, and I think that's important to note.
You can just ask chief.
Yes. So. That's painful to get here a little bit, but we got here, so. All right, any other comments or questions on the budget? You guys good?
I would say the other part that. Makes it a little easier for me to, to support it. Is because of had the privilege of watching departments operate now for almost a year, and uh. I see the, a lot of dedication, I see a lot of skill, and a lot of creativity, and people trying to do a really good job. Nope, there's, I don't see anybody doing. Anything that would. Raise a, a red flag, so I just, it makes it easy. To support it, I, I really appreciate all your work that you all do, and. And I hope that you get good appreciation from the citizens too, even when there's a budget increase.
A lot of our staff wear multiple hats.
Yeah.
If they didn't, it would be, it would cost more, so. And that's every department.
Yeah.
All right, nobody has anything else, is there a motion?
Before we make a motion, ladies, this is your chance to, if you want to talk about our budget, and the air is going to close here in just a few minutes.
Well.
If, if you want to talk, you got to get a bit of that mark.
We are, we are just posted.
I'm just trying to figure out what's going on, and I guess you have to come.
Yeah, it does help. Yeah.
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to close the uh, budget hearing.
We did that already? We already closed it?
We did.
Yeah. This is the motion to adopt the budget.
Well, I'll. To adopt the budget. Uh, motion to adopt the twenty twenty six Paola city budget in the amount of one million, you know, seventeen million, six hundred ninety two thousand, six hundred thirty five dollars. And authorize a necessary signatures.
I will second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. All right, new business. Emergency response plan annual review.
I'll take this one.
All right.
Yes, this is uh, reviewed annually, of course, uh. Mo Saad at Public Works reviewed it this year, and she did update some. Uh, contact information, but other than that, I don't believe there was any changes, uh, we do need to pass the resolution to adopt the plan. So it is the emergency response plan, and along with that, the emergency water supply plan.
Anybody have any questions on this? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution number two oh two five dash oh one eight. City of Paola emergency response plan and water system emergency response plan.
I second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
Right, motion passed. All right, the CUP regarding six ten North Silver, and then there's a new or, there's an ordinance number on there, right?
They got it, they, I was wondering, not mine.
Mm-hmm.
And so this is a request for a CUP at six ten North Silver. Um, for the owners of El Patro. Francisco Delatorre. To have. Refrigerated walk-in freezers. On this property. Um. That use. Qualifies as uh. Heavy retail and service. Which requires a CUP. In the thoroughfare access district. All the notifications were made, the public hearing was held at the planning commission meeting. And the planning commission did uh, recommend approval unanimously. Included in your packet, it is a site plan showing the location of the proposed units. Uh. And staff recommends approval of the CUP with following conditions. Uh, no overnight parking is permitted. Deliveries shall be made off-street and not block any part of Silver Street. Decorative fence or screenings shall be installed to screen the units from view. If the intensity of use changes, the owner shall request an amendment to the CUP. A review of compliance shall be made by the zoning officer to the planning commission one year after issuance, if deemed necessary. Subsequent annual reviews may be requested by the planning commission. Such reviews are not subject to publication, notification, and public hearing requirements. If the applicant is requesting an amendment to the CUP, the notification shall follow the same procedures as the original CUP request. And at any time, the city may institute revocation of the CUP for violations of the conditions of approval expiration. For the reasons specified in section twenty one, two twenty five of the LDO. The city shall provide notice to the landowner. And, and the public in the same manner as was provided for the establishment of the original CUP. Those last two are. Ones that we typically put on everything, just to keep a review and use that in there. So I have, anybody have any questions on it?
How long has that been vacant over there?
Since it was Sonic, um.
Fifteen, twenty years?
And.
Not that long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So. And their song came in. After a little bit of no.
Eight years.
Yeah.
Eight, eight or nine, eight or nine. Oh wow, this is the first interest that I've heard of anybody wanting to do anything when they.
I say, I seen a few cars sitting there once in a while, but that's about it.
Yeah.
I'm glad that you addressed the deliveries. On Silver, because that's one pending that's obvious, but uh. It may have been like. One of those things that comes up after the fact, so I'm glad you guys tackled that right now.
Yeah, it's easier to clearly communicate it, and get dealt.
Because that would be a nightmare.
Mm-hmm.
Any, any other questions or comments on it? If there's not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to uh, adopt ordinance number three two three, three two three seven, uh, the conditional use permit. With conditions for the heavy retail and service at six ten North Silver, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right, motion passed. Next, the, another CUP for one twenty five West Peoria. This is ordinance number thirty two thirty eight.
So this request for a CUP is from Daniel Chadwick, who owns the JDC Motor Group. Um, they specialize in online sales of vehicles. Um, what he does is he organizes the sale of online. Um. Goes to auctions, picks the vehicles up, and he also, part of his business is transportation services. So he will then transport them either directly from the auction to the buyer or to. Um, currently his house. To detail and get ready for sale. Um. Part of getting his state license is that he has to have a storefront. Um. For his business. So this. Uh, property is in the downtown district. And. A auto dealership, um, even though he's using it as an office. It's for an auto dealership. Uh, is heavy retail and service, which requires a CUP on the downtown district. Notifications were made on this, and public hearing was held at the planning commission meeting. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of it. Staff's recommendations, approval of the CUP with the following conditions. On-site temporary vehicle storage and parking shall be limited to four vehicles. All vehicles kept on the property must be in operable condition at all times. And the same too as the other, a review of compliance shall be made by the zoning officer to the planning commission one year after issuance. If deemed necessary, subsequent annual reviews may be requested by the planning commission. Such reviews are not subject to publication, notification, and public hearing requirements. If the applicant is requesting an amendment to the CUP, the notification shall follow the same procedures as the original CUP request. At any time, the city may institute revocation of the CUP for violations of the conditions of approval expiration. Or the reasons specified in section twenty one, two twenty five of the LDO. The city shall provide notice to the landowner. And public in the same manner that was provided for the establishment of the original CUP. There was some discussion on this, um. During the planning commission meeting, um, the main questions they had were uh, on the storage of the vehicles, um, and just making sure that. The, they were kept in operable condition, and that he wasn't working on, and he assured them. Uh, that the most he would be doing is detailing them, there wouldn't be any mechanic work or anything like that, okay?
You said all that is happening in the rear building.
Correct, there's actually enough space for. Probably comfortably six, pushing in maybe eight, but he felt four was sufficient. Um, he said if he has more vehicles that he needs to store than that, he can, he has offsite storage. Yeah. Elsewhere that he can do that.
All right, anybody have any questions on this one? If not, is there a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number three two three eight for the conditional use permit with conditions for the heavy retail and service at one twenty five West Peoria Street.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi.
All right.
So, so well. A little slack.
Housing incentive renewal. Housing incentive program renewal. This is another ordinance.
Yes. So it's the same thing we've done last several years, um, every year, I thought for renewal, uh, this housing, new housing construction incentive program. Um, helps attract home builders and gives them a break in the building permit, plan review, and in some situations. Uh, water and sewer connection fees. Uh, nothing was changed about the plan, uh. As far as the wording or heat percentages from the last years. Um, the percentages have worked out pretty well, and uh, contractors definitely been pretty responsive to it. Just to go over a couple of numbers, over the last year's utilization. Um, overall, it saved contractors about eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars in permanent. Um, and water and sewer connection fees. Uh, looks like. Two of them have been in the lots. Um, three or two East Ottawa and one or five West Shawnee, so we're getting a good little mix of infill and new subdivisions. And utilization has been. Pretty consistent uh, over the last three years at least, uh, it's generally that ten to fifteen. Houses they get on. Definitely a good thing, the staff's recommendation is the approval.
I can't remember when we started this, but I was in here when we started this. And the tiered system was to try to help incentivize more. Ordinances. Uh, which in today's market, that could be. Higher than it used to be, but I like, I like the way this program is set up, and I think it's worked well for us. Um. Because it's gotten, I think, I think originally also there were some partially completed houses out in Heatherwood. And just some different things that we were trying to get created, probably get some houses on the, on the taxshells. So I, I'm a big fan of this program, and I know we've had people in here asking for it. I think one time when we maxed out, or maybe it lapsed, was going to lapse for a month, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good program.
I'm for two, I think it is relates to the budget. We were just talking about, the more we can get infill and new billing, the, the more we can increase the tax base and spread it across. For people, I think it's a good, good thing to encourage and incentivize.
Yeah.
Mitch, I don't know if I've asked you specifically on this one, uh, it specifies new single-family homes, is there the ability to go for multifamily duplex, triplex, anything like that? I think we've typically, if it's like a townhome, we're typically.
Yeah.
So it's a bit as well.
It's not super rigid, that requirement.
Okay, as long as it's not a, a commercial housing.
Yeah.
Right, anybody else have any questions? Right, anybody else have any questions? No comments? If not, is there a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number three-two-three-nine, renewing the new housing construction incentive program.
Second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi. All right, motion passed.
Okay. Yes, so as discussed at the worst day session, um, Mr. Brett Marler got us a grant for some playground equipment. So we were able to get a new playground structure called the Six Mile. Which is originally about eighty thousand dollars, and we got that for half price. And we're also gonna get something called a Duo Spinner, which was almost three thousand dollars, and again, we got that for half price. Um, also, Public Works is going to be tearing down the existing structure and will be doing assisted build, so that's gonna save us a lot of money as well. So, uh, the total proposed project is fifty thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. It might go up only because when we remove the existing structure, if something breaks. We will hopefully replace it and keep it in good enough shape to repurpose that structure, so. Going back to the beginning, the Six Mile will replace the smaller. Playground structure at the Wallace Park Playground on the east side of the playground, and then. With that, we will have to remove the toddler swing set. But we can replace two of the belt swings, which there's currently four with those toddler swings, so it'll be two toddler, two belt. A new, um, play structure, and then the Duo Spinner will go between the big and the small structure. So kind of a, a revamp of everything at this moment, so. That is the plan, and like I said, the plan is to replace or remove the existing and put it at another park. We, we don't wanna uh, put exactly our plans for the other park until we figure out what the condition of the structure will be. I don't wanna promise a new playground somewhere else if it's not gonna be worth it, so, but once we pull it out, we will assess and. Meet back up and figure out where we're gonna put it, so, yeah. Um, so this is, the grant was with working with Cunningham Recreation, and it is from Playtime Structures is where the grant's from, so. It was happy surprise, came pretty quick, yeah, any questions?
I did some research on this one too.
Okay.
So I just happen to know somebody in the space, and uh, Cunningham has an excellent reputation, and um. So, and, and I was, not that I'm sure Brett, you did an amazing job in the grant proposal, but I was thinking like. Never been involved in a grant that came that easy, like that. But apparently the grants are amazing for playground equipment, and it's, so it's a industry norm.
Yeah, it was, the process was awesome.
Yeah.
And they're great to work with, so you were very right.
Where, uh, where do the grants come from? Do they come from the manufacturer, the company themselves?
So they, you have to choose from a list of approved play or game time structures, so although Cunningham facilitates it, it's playtime that gives the break.
Okay.
It is fairly funded, those, I understand.
Yes, yeah, I was wondering if that was, yes, part of one of the initiatives for healthy America.
Yeah.
Like that.
Yeah.
Very exciting, my kids are gonna be open to it.
I took this paper home last week, and I do have some kids that are very excited about this.
Awesome, yes. We wanted to replace the existing with something that was similar, but had a little bit more to it, so this gives a little few more options and.
Freshen up, it'll, it'll, even though it's one piece, it's a big piece, and it'll be, it'll be good.
Yeah.
Also, big fan of the fact that it's telephone.
Yes.
Not, not to disparage any of the other communities around, but the gray and green and white bland coloring for play equipment for kids is just not. Not it, so the bright colors.
That was the fun part. That's funny.
All right, anybody else have any questions, comments? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the playground proposal and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi. All right, motion passed. So now that we know that, what's the timeline looking like for it? Or do we even know that yet?
Uh, I have no idea, I'm gonna notify them that we're gonna move forward with purchasing, and then as soon as we get.
And he said four to six weeks.
Yeah.
It's close, so we're kinda waiting on planning on what to do until.
Yeah.
Till it's approved.
I didn't know, because it seems like any kind of specialized stuff. Is, it seems very far out nowadays, so I was just curious.
Yes, and then we were able to save some money, um. Because he did bid the Six Mile and the Duo Spinner separately, and I said, if we put him on one, can we save freight? He's like, oh yeah, I'll do that.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna save some money on freight, so it worked well.
Very good.
Every dollar counts.
Yeah.
All right, next is the Cora fee changes. And this is because of something in the state changed, right?
Yeah, so the Kansas Open Records Act, that was passed in nineteen eighty-four. Um, presumed the flat fee of twenty-five cents per page was uh, reasonable. That is no longer the case, they want the uh, actual city costs to be associated with that fee. So our, um, city code does charge the twenty-five cents per page. We also have uh, charged at the rate of fifteen dollars per hour per employee that is in, um, doing the inspection. So we will just change some words around to say, um, a record inspection fee shall be charged at the hourly rate per employees engaged. And the copying fee, uh, shall not exceed the actual cost of furnishing the copies, including the cost of staff time. Required to make the information available, so those little changes should keep us out of trouble. We do have, um, I noted in your memo, the fire department does charge a ten dollars fee. But it costs the city forty dollars a run for them to go in and do the report, so. Although it is a flat rate, it is not excessive or untraceable to charge that fee.
We, have we had any, um, records requests with the city?
As a blank, yes. Typically, I think it's mostly like the building.
Don't know if you had somebody in there asking for like boxes of files out here.
I mean, on the building inspection, some of the house files, property files are big, but.
Okay.
Yeah, not like boxes of budget files.
Yeah.
Most of that's all publicly published anyway, so mainly it is inspections, going for mess.
Yeah, we luckily now put all of our financials in the packets online, so it's easily accessible for anyone, they don't have to pay to get a copy of it.
Anybody have any questions on that one? If not, is there a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number three-two-four-zero, amending inspection fees and copying fees related to the Kansas Open Records Act.
I'll second that.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi. All right, motion passed. Next, the one-fifteen West, we have agreement, authori- authorization.
Like the end of an era.
Finally.
So, um, yes, at its meeting on August twelfth, the L City Council received four bids, and. This council decided to go with Lowman Realty and Investments LLC for fifty-two thousand dollars. Um, so I had been working with the city attorney, we drafted the agreement, I sent it to, um. Lowman Real Estate, and they approved it, so I just need to have the authorization for the mayor to execute it in order to close officially on Friday.
Anybody have anything they saw in the contract? That they are questioned about or concerned about? All right. Are there no comments or questions, is there a motion?
I move to approve the land purchase agreement with Lowman Realty and Investments LLC in the amount of fifty-two thousand. And authorizing the mayor to sign.
I'll second that motion.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shields.
Hi. All right, motion passed.
As I started here, that has been.
Yeah.
Yeah, how many years?
Ten years ago, when I started, you developed the department, that was. Same.
Yeah.
Full circle.
Hopefully we'll get something written there, it'll. Perfect fit.
Yes.
All right, staff reports, chief?
I've been.
Nothing at all. Brett?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, still waiting on the completion of the dam, uh. The grass did grow up that well, based on timing, maybe it's just Johnson grass. So we sprayed and killed it, and kill will be coming back this month, they're recently needed, and re-straw. And then once we get a good grass growth, then we'll be able to. Sign all of the dam. It's good.
That'll be the end of an era also. These two things have taken. Ten years each. Yeah.
So that's the main thing we're waiting on, they've got a couple of other things, they haven't buttoned up the other things because they just wanted to at the same time.
Yeah.
So in the next couple of weeks, I think they should be coming in, dressing up and re-grading the dam again, and then seed straw. Hopefully get a good growth on it, better seed in the fall anyway, so.
Yeah. Good.
The only other thing I'm sure you guys have probably seen, we're started some upgrades on the signals on. Silver and Baptiste and Silver, and we have, uh. Convert them to dual signal, better safety, brings them up to code, actually, they weren't actually up to modern standards. So they're near completion on that, they're waiting on parts to change out, three more folds, and then that'll be done. And I've also requested, because those are Evergy owned signals, and Capital Electric maintains them for them and for us. Uh, I have submitted a request through Capital Electric to Evergy to include signal detection. And pedestrian crossings on those as well, so just trying to get Evergy to step up and, and take care of that as well. Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
Don't know if they'll actually go aboard with it or not, I haven't heard of it, I think yes or no yet, so.
Okay, that'd be great if they did.
Just curious what the seed mix is going back on the dam? Do you know?
I don't know the exact, I, I don't know, I don't know what the contract actually.
Silly question.
No, I, I've actually been asked that before, and I have read back on the contract to see what it actually called out for on.
K thirty-one.
Hmm, K thirty-one, I imagine, if you had to be in a direct sunlight, I imagine it's gonna be some kind of best people. Yeah.
Trying to make plans for sledding or.
Sometimes by the. I was curious.
The guardrails are great compared to what we had in the past, goodness.
Yeah, it looks like they're gonna fall over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That's it? Mitch?
Uh, the barn at six-ten East Cast Castia is down.
Wow, I missed it.
I didn't miss it.
Mark, where's the calendar?
Uh, yeah, he was originally scheduled just to take out trees around it today, and I showed up after work and it was all down, so.
And the vultures had left the nest.
Mm-hmm, yep, they had left before I gave him, uh, permission. Um, he did say while he was in town doing that, he wanted to do two oh nine North Pearl as well, so. That one will be coming down very soon as well, so.
In the next few days.
I can't say a specific time, he hasn't, he hasn't scheduled the time with us, he's pulled the.
Drop roll or something, you just know when they're gonna.
We're at four hundred permits already for the year, uh. For comparison, we ended the last two years at four hundred and twenty-three and four hundred and twenty-eight permits, so we're. Well, well ahead of that curve. So, yeah, it's a good thing.
And to bring off significantly, or is it?
Not really, the last, the last month has still been. Still like quite a few permits and, and, uh. Obviously a lot of small things, but, uh, Trevor's been really good at driving around and catching people working without him. That probably attributes to, to a decent amount.
Yeah.
Uh. It's nice to have, be able to have a full staff that. If, did in bed. Um. He also completed two new business inspections for Talk of the Town. And beautifully redeemed Antique and Thrift, Talk of the Town's going in or is in now, uh, right next to the Ice Cream Shop on the Square. And beautifully redeemed is at the old Emporium, so moving businesses.
What's the name of the Emporium, the old Emporium?
Beautifully redeemed.
Okay, it's nice in there. Very organized.
Yeah.
It's very organized.
If, uh, you should definitely stop in there, if you remember what the Emporium looked like, this is night and day difference.
Yeah, it's, it's really nice.
They had a farmer John Schreder come in the other day.
I gotta.
Works exceptionally well.
I gotta play in all the rooms at the White House. I don't know.
Why do you have your businesses Talk of the Town?
Uh, and they do tea and kind of smoothies, healthy.
It's the one that was on Baptiste Drive.
Is it guaranteed not to be fat?
Yeah, I, and anything do that.
They had their, uh, back to school event, uh, last weekend, and there was, there was a good turnout, there was people out the door. Constantly, so for lots of good things about it.
And they do deliveries and pay a lot on Tuesdays, if you get your order in ahead of time. Just FYI. You're shrouded on the grass. Late, and you need delivery.
Um, no planning commission next week, we don't have any agenda items as of now, I'm hoping October. Time's running up for applications to get in, by the time, uh, they would go on October. Got a lot of leads on stuff, so I'm hoping to get them turned in, get some stuff rolling with that. Uh, code enforcement wise, uh, you guys all have a, a letter in your packet, I received the same letter. And I called the person who wrote the letter, and. Went over some of the concerns they had, uh. Had a very long conversation, um, she informed me, Leanne, that she was your friend. Specifically, um. I tried to explain to her, uh, all of the things, almost all the things on that list. The city I have been dealing with for years now, um, I tried to explain everything that we have done and are doing. Um, and she was not happy with that, and I'm not on me, so. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna keep working on them, uh. Never quit on them, it's just an, an ongoing thing, you know, so I just wanna let you guys know I did address that with her, and. That was the outcome.
Any else on list of yours?
Does it?
Okay.
All right, Randy.
I just have that, um, the Board and County Commission and the School Board have officially approved the RFP. The RFP, oh my god, the NRP, Neighborhood Realization Plan, so I will be taking those agreements and submitting them to the Attorney General for approval. So we can get moving forward with that. Go ahead.
The chamber dinner is coming up on October sixteen, so if, I will send out an email, um, to remind you, but if you and your spouse would like to attend, the city will. Buy your ticket, so I'll reach out for a headcount. That is a luau theme this year.
Oh, fun.
So there's a prize for dressing. Yeah, luau, so, yes. Shouldn't fuck.
What is it, sixteenth, is that a?
It's a weeknight.
Except the monotony.
So that's all they have for us.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday at work.
Yeah. Are they out on my calendar? All right.
I'm gonna think I'll be back in town, but.
JR?
Uh, I respectfully defer to, uh, Councilman, uh, Hugo.
Derek would like to end.
I, I got, I got some handouts. And some homework.
Yeah.
Council, let me.
Um. Brett, the fountain. Uh, per Randy's email, not operating for the rest of the season, have we narrowed down like where the problem is coming from with that, or is it just under the fountain? Like. Okay.
We'll be discussing that next one.
That sounds like it'd be to most of us.
Yeah, that, that'll be something that'll be brought up at next month's.
It's, it's fairly old, so I imagine there's probably some issues we don't even know about underneath it.
Yeah, and it's, we've tried to narrow it down without actually tearing the fountain up. Found one leak outside, but it's gone from under it.
Yeah, okay, well, it's good to know.
So, and the. Favor of saving money on water, we just drink it all if it is, that's losing thousands of gallons, so.
It's not an insignificant amount.
Yeah, it's. Daily. But it's losing a lot of water, so. Kept it open for the majority of the stuff, but it was time to just, yeah, drain it.
Well, that's good to know, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Um, Mitch, I, I commend you for taking on the, the. Um, Mitch, I commend you for taking on the, the call there. Um. I mean, I, I get it. I live two houses down from one of these houses and they have standing water in the basement. There's mosquitoes. Everywhere, every time we go outside, but at the end of the day, we can only do so much in the municipality. There's still private property rights and I think that that's a fairly important consideration. We can't just impose directly what we deem. That property should be. And some people don't like to hear that, but that's the reality of it. That's the beauty of. Living in a nation where you have the ability to have your own personal property, so I think that that's an important point to reinforce from. At least my perspective. Um, outside of that, the, the stoplights, so maybe pedestrian indicators for crossing.
Right.
Uh, that's up to Evergy.
Correct.
Okay.
Cause they own it, they would be paying for it. So the request has been made. Uh, Capital Electric's kinda the go-between.
Okay.
And it just so happened the day I requested, they uh Capital Electric had a meeting with Evergy the next day.
That works out.
So hopefully.
He writes on their minds.
Yeah, he addressed it with them. And that's kinda how the signal upgrades came about too, was they, they kinda said, you know, I think you're gonna have to push this to get it to.
Yeah.
To go through.
How is it that Evergy controls that?
They do it in a lot of cities.
Okay.
And then I, I think we pay a rental fee or lease fee or.
Yeah.
And uh.
Track control's expensive to bring in house and then.
Yeah. But uh, yeah, the request has been made and then I did give an email back to Capital Electric just saying it's basically he copied uh. The Evergy Signal Team on the uh email and asked for a. Kind of a brief summary of what I was looking for for upgrades.
Hmm.
And then the email man told me the ball's in that court, so we'll wait and see if I get back from Evergy or not.
Good. I, I might, might get a contact if they say no. I like, I like pedestrian crossing indicators.
There, there's, there's other options too. We're working on a transportation safety action plan right now.
It's.
That, that could be, you know, put it in as well. I'm not trying to get it done every.
The, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a fan of that. Um.
Well, I wanna thank the public works for, I was driving around the day today and some of the employees had just cut down three trees on the parking. Dead trees and it, they're just getting started.
They are and more to come this winter. Um, we don't mark them, so I've come in with a different way to mark them, so. We can go around this winter and not cut down ones that aren't supposed to be cut down.
Yeah.
So.
Look good.
It's, uh, probably multiple times this winter. I want that to be a tough part of the, the. Get on it when lowing slows down and.
Yeah.
So I really hope to see this winter have that list dwindled down to where it doesn't take as long to get to one when somebody called in.
Yeah.
Anything else, Leanne?
No.
Okay, back to JR.
I'm gonna hand out a city manager performance evaluation. And uh, as soon as everybody gets it, I'll preface a few comments on this. When it's all said and done, I believe per your contract, Ms. Shannon, you're to be evaluated in October of each year. Uh, we had an evaluation form which I complained about as much as anybody's ever complained about it to the point that uh. The mayor goes, we're gonna have a new evaluation form and according to custom, you are in charge of it. Uh, so I, I, I immediately said yes. Uh, so with that. Uh, Ms. Shannon, I have been working on this for about two weeks now, haven't we? And uh, the, uh, what I kinda wanted was is. City manager in the way that our system is, uh, she's our employee. But then again, she, she manages the city, so uh at the end of the day, how the city behaves and how the city acts. Okay, is it, is a, uh, is, is directly related to her. So now we got up everything. And we gotta do it, uh, and now we gotta move forward. So ultimately, I'm, I'm just gonna read this, this first paragraph. Uh. Each member of the governing body should complete this evaluation form and that should be, shall. Um, um, my expectation is that I'll get this back. Which I know what happened. Uh, sign it in the space below and return it to Council President, uh, Jeremy McMahon. At the worst day session October seventh. That gives us about three weeks to take a look at it. Evaluations will be summarized and included on the agenda as an executive session or discussion at the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. City Council Meeting. And then it has the evaluation period. Also, I asked Ms. Shannon, if you go to the very back. It got a couple of important things in there that we need to look at when we do our evaluation. Uh, we did this about a year ago. Uh, we talked about our mission statement, how we do that. And probably something just as much important as your vote to the one that uh. We go in and we talked about, we voted on, on, on what we wanted and how we wanted to do it. So when you're doing your evaluations, okay, it's a little early to get started on this one right here. But as we move forward, once we set priorities as a council, eh, that gives Ms. Shannon her marching orders and has her to go forth. Now, she still does, does other things, but that, but that's kinda what we go on. What. I don't wanna happen is to two things, council, council members. I, I, I don't wanna take their voice away. But at the end of the day, we, we evaluate her. We evaluate her as a council. She doesn't get five different e- evaluations. It's my job to take those evaluations and summarize those. And put them out, okay? So all I ask is that be very thoughtful when you do it. And this gives us a chance to act ha- 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 as a council and has, and how the ci- and how the uh. Uh, mayor, council slash city manager, this, this is how it works. So get these back over to me and then I will summarize those. And then we'll uh sit down there and we'll have an executive session with Ms. Shannon and then we'll discuss this. Uh. If, I, I, I wanna put this as he- 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 as nice as I can, when it's all said and done. Not everything that I think needs to be in there, we'll get in the, in the summarization. So. If you really think it's something that's important, make sure that you put a note on it that, hey, I think this is something that, that we need to, to ta- take a look at it. But ultimately, this is sent over to me as council president. That's kinda how we end up doing it. Uh, I do have one question since uh, and I, uh. If I take questions are probably run by the city attorney, if I take questions concerning not the eval. The e- evaluation process, not how to evaluate, am I breaking the, an individual, am I breaking the open meetings act?
No, as long as you don't directly ask in regards to me, no.
No.
Just not the form in general. Yes.
Yeah, that's the form and, and kinda like.
The process.
Yeah, when you said these sentence, JR, what did you guys mean? Wh- what do I look at?
Yes.
Yeah, you just can't discuss feedback.
Just don't rate me right now in public is all I ask.
But at the end of the day, this, this is a, again, this, this will be our first foray into this. I'm, I'm pretty excited about it. Uh, when it's all said and done, it gets us to act as a council. And again, she, uh, the city manager gets one evaluation from the council's hold. And that's pretty much how it works in this system. So I'll, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for JR right now?
Operationally, we'll, we'll, we'll fill this out and give it to you and then are we gonna meet after you summarize it?
That'll be the executive session on the fourteenth.
Okay.
Is when we meet as a group.
So we won't, we won't go over it as a group summarized. It'll be once, it, it'll, it'll just be. It'll already be finalized at that point, so.
The way we, yeah, the way we've typically, typically done it, um, is we hand these out. Everybody takes their time to fill out their own individual, compile them, give them to JR, JR will summarize. And then all of our, usually all of our evaluations will go in the HR file for Randy. Um, just for. You know, if there's ever any question, how we came up with it. And then um, we will meet usually without her first. An executive session, discuss, and then we'll bring her in and go over it as a group together. It's usually how it works. But it's all an executive session because it's first of all matter, so. Um, any other questions or JR, anything else that I missed?
No.
Process?
Not, not, not really. I, I just, one thing I wanted to impress, again, I don't wanna take any voice away from the, the uh. Each council members, but I firmly believe this is a situation where we have a council. Evaluation for the city manager, not five different evaluations. How they certainly go in the file. But only the, and I, and again, I, if, if there's conversation about this, please, please let me know. Uh, I just. I. Eh, when I'm evaluated, I'm evaluated by one person. Even when I was evaluated by the commission, it was one. One at one, you know, it, it was one and, and, and that was it. So uh. I, I guess at the end of the day, I will summarize them and I'll put something out. All I ask is that you keep a copy of, of your evaluation. When you, you fill it out, you know, so, so you'll have one there uh as far as that goes, but uh typically what we'll do is that we will meet. A little bit before, make sure everybody feels like the summarization represents us as a council, not us as individuals. And then we bring Ms. Shannon in after that.
Okay.
And if you do keep a copy, which I honestly am not going to.
Okay.
Because I don't want any kind of private matter in my house. Anywhere.
I, I will refer to that.
Yeah. I would encourage you to turn your copy in. If you ever for some reason want a copy of it, just have them.
Yes.
But I think it's nice to not have it in my possession, so.
And the, and the bear Trumps makes.
Um, not that there's anything, you just, it's just best to put it all in the HR file. Um. So, and I, on your note about one evaluation. This is a little bit cheesy, but it's called a governing body, not bodies. So this is where we act as one.
Correct.
So.
Uh, Ms. Shannon, you got any comments on this process?
I hate it.
It's um, at least, well, there are some years we also go over her contract at the same time. This is just the evaluation because she's still on the contract until.
Next year.
The end of next year. So next year we'll have to do about.
Next year.
It's, it's directly tied to this, so it's not, it's pretty painless for us, not for Randy. She's always on the contract for no reason, but.
Well, if, if it's any consolation, I had an employee for twenty years, never looked at her evaluation once in twenty years. Then everyone discussed it with me. She said, fill it out, I don't care what it says. And then she was signing it like this. Never looked at it, so, but she was a good employee.
Alright, any other questions on the evaluation process? Alright, JR, thank you for taking that on.
Thank you.
It needed revamp, but it was not a high priority in my life, so I'm glad that you took it on.
Well, I had put mine, I had to put my money where my mouth was, because I've been running my mouth and then all of a sudden you show it. It's like, okay, it's mine.
Really happy to, a bit of her. So, thank you for doing that. Um, just a few more things for me. Um, thank you to Mitch and Randy. So last night they gave a presentation and answered all kinds of questions at the school board meeting. And they did a great job representing us, so thank you. Just wanted to publicly say thank you to you too. I was gonna see it for myself. Uh. There, back to the budget a little bit. And what you pointed out earlier about the percentage of the budget that actually comes from property tax, I think staff does a great job of having multiple revenue streams and it's really, really important to keep. Keep that up, cause it's, it's hard enough as it is. So it's good to have multiple revenue streams. Um, and I think that is all I have. And then what's to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
McMahon.
Hi.
Hugo.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Shield.
Hi.
Alright, I'm meeting here.